Hi, everyone. Okay. Of course, we have so many people, just a reminder to mute your mics. So everybody will be able to hear. Okay. Okay, as we do with every board meeting, I like to begin with the pledge, so please stand. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our April 7th regular board meeting. This is our second Zoom meeting since we are practicing our social distancing as we are doing for the last couple of weeks. I hope everybody is well. Dan, too, is not joining us tonight. He is well, but just had to attend to a family matter. Okay. Just as a reminder, too, I like to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded as all our board meetings are. Right, tonight, we start with our first presentation, Relay for Life, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Egan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm broadcasting from San Remo this evening so that we made sure that Wi-Fi didn't drop off, which is important. We are joined by Morgan Wright, our Relay for Life team. We are very hopeful that school will be back in time so that we can run our Relay for Life event. And what I am going to do is I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint that should fill your screen. And I'm going to ask Morgan to unmute. And I'm gonna run the PowerPoint, then Morgan, if you could just tell me when to advance, and you can go ahead and speak.
Morgan, before you start, if we can ask folks on the phone to go unmute again, please? We're getting some background noise off of somebody's line. Thank you.
Should we just start? I don't know.
Yep, you're all set, Morgan. Talk away.
Awesome. Actually, I have Eric, Maddie, and Amanda, who will be joining us later. And they're gonna, I think Eric is gonna kick it off for us.
Awesome.
Hello. As Morgan said, my name is Eric, and I'm here with, I'm a co-chair of Relay for Life Committee at the high school. And I'm also here with Maddie.
Hi, everyone.
And we're just here today to talk to you about our Relay for Life event. So if you would advance the slides, the slide, please. So what is Relay for Life? Advance the slide again, please.
Do you want the next slide?
Yeah, one more.
Can you hear me? Is my mic working okay?
I got it, I got it.
Okay, we're good. So Relay for Life is, as it says, the world's largest fundraising event that saves lives from cancer. And it's an event that unites thousands of communities around the globe to raise money. And we have our own Relay for Life event at the high school. It's a global fundraiser movement. It saves so many lives, and it's just an amazing thing that the American Cancer Society puts on for communities throughout the world. And a little shout out to myself there, but I'm in the top right picture. The Got Hope sign, that is my team. I've been with the team since freshman year. And Relay for Life, personally for me, has been such an amazing experience, and I have loved doing it throughout high school. Next slide, please. So there's many things that go on in the day of Relay for Life. It's a really fun-filled day with so many things that happen. And as I said, I've been doing it for all four years of high school, and I've never been bored of the day. I've always had something to do, and it's been a really genuine and amazingly amazing experience. So you can expect various things throughout the day, which are listed on the slide, like the survivor brunch. And you go to opening ceremonies, and then we have different themed laps planned throughout the day. We have food entertainment come, like last year, we had food trucks show up. We had, no, we have knockball every year. It's like a fun time for everyone. We have the luminary ceremony, then closing ceremony. And then at the closing ceremony, we reveal the total amount of money we raised. We actually have a picture of that later. It's a fun moment. And then, again, throughout the day, just fun fundraiser activities, and it's a really fun experience. All right, next slide, please. So here's how we did last year. As you see on the slide, we had a total of 20 survivors show up to the event and 400 participants. And we raised almost $52,000, as you can see in the picture. All right, next slide, please.
That's me. Awesome. So when you support the American Cancer Society and the Relay for Life movement, you're truly making a difference by helping save lives and celebrate lives every single day. The American Cancer Society is working hard toward a world free from the pain and suffering of cancer. Next slide, please. Your donations really make a difference because one in three people in the United States will get cancer in their lifetime. Relay for Life allows all communities to come together to take up this fight against cancer. Next slide, please. The dollars raised for Relay for Life event allow the American Cancer Society to provide free information and support for people facing the disease today. Educate people how to reduce their risk to cancer and to detect it early when it's easiest to treat and to fund cancer research that would help protect future generations. There's a few programs that we do fund. We do fund the National Cancer Information Center, so it's a place where, no matter what time of day, 24/7 patients or caregivers, anybody wanting information about cancer, they can call us. It's 1-800-277-2345. So it's a great number they should always kind of keep on hand. Another highlight that I like to talk about is our Road to Recovery program that allows cancer patients who are undergoing treatment, if their family or their friends can't drive them to treatment. We set them up with a driver. We do have a rideshare program, so those funds do go to that as well. A couple of honorable mentions are Hope Lodge, which is located in New York City, right outside of Madison Square Garden in Penn Station, where cancer patients can stay for free if their cancer treatment is too far away from where they actually live. So it's another great program that we do provide. Next slide, please.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Okay, so this is what we're asking you today is to join our Relay for Life mission in Kings Park by starting your own fundraising team or joining an existing one. So I'm going to go through that process. You can click the next slide. So to sign up, it's really easy. All you have to do is go to relayforlife.org/kingsparknewyork. Once you're there, you click on "Join this Relay" and begin the registration process. If you've already done a Relay and registered for one before, it's really easy. You just have to log into your account. If not, you just create one using the American Cancer Society account, which is a single sign-on process to access all American Cancer Society events. Next slide, please. So this is just showing you the steps on how you can sign up. So you can make a new team or join a team with as many people as you want, or you could do it individual and then go through the process as if you are a survivor caregiver or just joining us. Next slide, please. So to get involved, all you have to do is grab some friends, sign up, and start fundraising. It might be hard right now to start doing some of these fundraising options because we can't be together, but a lot of Facebook fundraisers are working right now, and Kings Park Moms, all of that seems to really be working, so I would advise you to do those. Next slide, please.
Okay, so as Amanda just explained the signup process, the next step would be to sign up your team and get involved. With each team, there's individual fundraising that you can do, and that's one of the easiest and quickest and even best ways to get involved with Relay before the actual event. You could also consider joining our committee. We meet about once a month, and then as the event gets closer, we meet multiple times a month. We're responsible for planning the event, picking out the activities for the day of, and we really kickstart the fundraising for all of Relay for Life. We typically have community meetings and team captain meetings. At both these meetings, people come down, and if it's the team captain meeting, the team captain of each team comes down. But we give information about the day and any updates we have, and then at some point, you do pick your campsite for the day of the event. However, obviously, due to the circumstances, being there in person isn't possible. So we'll be holding two meetings, both virtual on Zoom. They'll be Monday, April 20th at 7:00 PM, and Monday, May 11th at 7:00 PM. And we'll have more information about that to follow. You can click to the next slide, please. So obviously, we are aware that as things continue to evolve with the current pandemic, we may be faced to reevaluate our plans for an in-person event for this year. If that does happen, we will absolutely still be having a Relay experience for everyone. This is a really important event, and we don't want to let that affect us. Next slide, please. In the event that we can't have this in-person event, we will be planning something virtual for everyone to be able to join. Especially now, we encourage you all to follow us on our social media handles. They are above. As said, on Instagram, we're @kingsparkrelay. And on Facebook, we're @kingsparkrelayforlife. Like and follow, and you'll get lots of updates as we get them and keep you guys updated about what's going on with Relay. Next slide, please. So as the quote says, "It takes teamwork to fight cancer." And you can join us, and together we'll attack cancer in our community and eventually defeat it as our biggest rival. So start building your teams, invite survivors to our event, and get excited. Next slide. So if you guys have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them or anything of that sort.
I did, but this was so well coordinated. You answered my questions already. Seriously, the "what-if" questions, that you would still be able to do a fundraiser even if it meant not getting together, so thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for what you're doing.
No problem. Thank you, guys, for the support. We appreciate it.
If you guys email me all the information regarding, you know, Zoom meetings and, you know, whatever you need me to publicize, it's I don't know if this is showing up backwards, but it's
No, it's fine.
You got it. It might be the low-tech way to use tech.
kpcst.org. I'd be more than happy to help publicize. You know, with a little bit of luck, we'll be able to be back in school, and we can get this event up and running because I think the community really comes out for this event. And, you know, I think, I think come June, everyone's going to want to just get out in general. You know, a great, a great way to do that. So thank you for your leadership in this area. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also just want to add my thanks also. That was a great presentation. You hit it on everything. And last year, I was asked to do the survivor speech. And it was a very touching experience, and the community that came out was so supportive. But to think that it begins in our high school with our students putting this program together is a phenomenal job. And it's a really special event for the community, and I thank you guys for doing this again.
Thank you.
Of course. Yeah, thank you.
And that is our only presentation, Dr. Egan. So I will go to public comments. The Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must first identify themselves to the district clerk and then address their comments to the board. Comments by an individual may not exceed three minutes. Due to confidentiality concerns, the board does not permit speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student or personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board meeting. Anybody on here with public comment? So I'll go on to the consent agenda. For the approval of minutes for the March 24th budget workshop and regular board meeting, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, new business personnel schedule number 15. Mr. Craig?
Okay, good evening, everyone. You'll see we have some additional people joining us this evening. So for tonight's personnel schedule, we do have our tenure recommendations. So typically, we'd be able to gather together for a little pre-celebration, but given the unique circumstances, we're going to do this a little bit differently, but we have promised all the people being recommended for tenure that once we're able to gather again, which is hopefully soon, we will give them the proper recognition. So that being said, I'm just going to call off the names of those being recommended for tenure this evening. Maybe when I call your name, raise your hand in your little Brady Bunch boxes, Dr. Egan likes to say. So first, we have Sarah Fordell, special education teacher from William T. Rogers Middle School. There's Sarah there. Mina Lachella, ENL teacher from William T. Rogers Middle School. We have Ashley Macedonia, ASL teacher from Kings Park High School. We also have Caitlin McGurk School. And finally, Stacy Tellman, a special ed teacher from Parkview Elementary. So certainly, all these teachers have done outstanding work over the past few years. They received wonderful calls for tenure this evening. So not only do we congratulate them for their great work in the past few years, but look forward to many more years of great contributions to the Kings Park School District. So on behalf of the administration, we congratulate everyone, and we put forth these teachers for tenure recommendation this evening. Mr. Ford.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Congratulations to all of you. I know it's a very important moment in your career. Well deserved, and for those, if you didn't see it, Dr. Egan was clapping for each and every one of you. And as the board, we want to congratulate you and thank you for you, what you do to make our district what it is. So congratulations to all. So I will make a motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we look forward to gathering together to really celebrate together. Thank you. Okay, on to new business, voting finances, authorization to sign transfer to pupil personnel and IT. Is that Ms. Meehan?
Yeah, I think, I think Ms. Meehan was going to tag me in for that one.
Okay.
So we, we saved on our health insurance line this year, which, which is definitely a help for us. It's good to know that, you know, occasionally, we do save in some key budget codes, which is good. We had some unanticipated costs in the area of special schools and consultants. So in order to best cover our student needs and supply some, some services to our special needs students right now, and also to expedite our Chromebook initiative, we had, for the current year, we, we had a one-to-one initiative in grade eight. We had initially hoped that we would be able to expand our Chromebook initiative to grades eight to 10 for September, but this budget transfer would allow us to expand the Chromebook one-to-one initiative to grades seven through 12 for September. So, so again, this, this transfer will support those three areas, special schools, consultants, and purchase of additional Chromebooks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Egan. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the attached transfer in the amount of $671,264.38 to cover additional consulting services, replacement tuitions, and the purchase of additional student Chromebooks to support the Chromebook one-to-one initiative through Western Suffolk Bosse's for the 2019-2020 school year, as listed below.
Pam, I guess I would just say, not a comment from, not a question from before, but as doctors, I think it's, given what we're going through now, the ability to ramp up this process and get more devices to more of our kids, especially in upper grades, is I think a really worthwhile investment. So good to be able to put those funds to use that way.
Absolutely. Win-win for all. Okay. On to new business voting, pupil personnel, the acceptance of CSC meetings recommendations. Dr. Colby Rooney?
Good evening, everyone. The following will include minutes from '87 Committee on Special Education meetings that were held between the dates of April 8th through April 10th.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached individualized educational programs, IEPs, from January 8th, 2020 to April 10th, 2020, '87 in total. I would just like to say that date again, April 10th. So services are continuing. Our schools are running. Thank you for all your work in keeping those meetings for students and parents.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the authorization to sign that agreement for New York Therapy Placement Services. Dr. Colby Rooney?
Yes, the FALM Agreement Addendum is related to the current remote learning. It'll provide teleservices for some of our students that require related services in the district.
Okay, great. Again, something else that's new to everyone. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached agreement to New York Therapy Placement Services, Remote Learning Services, and gives the board president authorization to sign that agreement. Okay, we are up to new business. Dr. Egan, do you have any?
No. No new business, but I do have a couple of updates for us this evening. You know, so, so obviously, you know, we're experiencing some challenging times right now. Just to give you, you know, a picture or view, just to make mail arrive at the district and, you know, get mail sorted has been, you know, a bit of a process the last couple of weeks. But we have all our essential services up and running, and we're keeping things moving along as best we can. We, we just began posting a Q and A to the website that has lots of valuable information for, for parents, for teachers, and students. I posted it for the, for the first time yesterday, based on some, some questions we had been receiving. Made our first update today. The first update was that schools are now going to be closed through April 29th. And we, we also heard that Regents exams for this June have been canceled. And then today, we received some additional details on that cancellation from the State Education Department, and I'll be doing an update tomorrow on, on what that looks like, specifically for our students, for our teachers. So we're getting inundated with information on a daily basis, and I'll make sure that I'm able to make sense of that through this, this question and answer that I've set up on, on the website. I just wanted to, to share something with you real quick. And I had showed this last time at our last board meeting. You know, one, one of the questions, and I think Governor Cuomo has been showing something similar on his daily updates. These are real data points in terms of the number of COVID cases in the United States, and green, red is New York, and blue is Suffolk County. So the one thing you'll notice that, you know, Suffolk County does make up a significant number of the cases, not only in the state, but also in the country. But you'll, you'll also notice that we're
It's Dr. Egan.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing the screen. It just says that you started screen sharing.
Huh. Uh, hold on.
Maybe just try again.
Okay.
Try again.
I'll just blank, but.
For some reason, it doesn't like, it doesn't like the file. Oh, well. So at, at any rate, we, we are, we are approaching, if you think of life, life under COVID-19 as a bell curve, we're approaching what's called the apex, which means that we should, we should see a leveling off soon. And we want to be on the downside of that curve because that'll mean that we're getting closer to the end. The last time we had met, which was two weeks ago, we were in what's called the exponential phase of that curve. And now we're just starting to get to the top. You know, getting to the top is a blessing and a curse. It's a curse because more people are going to be getting sick. And it's really a time that we want to emphasize social distancing and staying indoors and not going out anymore than, than we need to. But it is a blessing because we know that we're getting closer to, to the end, which is, which is good. So just, just a couple of quick updates. We have three essential plans that we have in motion right now. Essential plan number one is a collaborative in terms of childcare for first responders and healthcare workers, and that's a collaborative on a county basis. So if we know anybody that falls into this first responder or healthcare worker category, they can get free childcare through, through the county and scope, and that information is posted on the website. We have an amazing group of people who are providing meals to our students in need on a daily basis. I want to thank my team for continually updating that list that, that then gets sent to transportation and to Kings Park High School. Aram Mark, who's our food service provider, has, has been great about getting the meals out every day. We're providing a little over 250 meals a day, and a meal consists of both breakfast and lunch. So in addition to that, we have food pantries that are, that are posted on the website and also in the Q and A. And SEPTA has been instrumental with also donating non-perishables, which we've been loading up the families on Fridays to try to help them get through the weekend. So, so that's been a real big effort on that end. The third really important essential plan is our continuity of learning plan. Our, our teachers have been doing a great job, and our principals doing a great job keeping an eye on things. We're leveraging individual teacher websites, Google Classroom and features within Google, like Google Meet. We're using Zoom on, you know, somewhat of a limited basis, a little bit more on the administrative end. Zoom presents, presents a little bit of a, a challenge from a hacking standpoint, but but we do have some staff that are very, very comfortable with using Zoom, and we're making use of that whenever we can. For example, meetings like this that we're holding right now is being held via Zoom. We're leveraging both synchronous and asynchronous video and tools like Flipgrid, where we can record video and then students can watch that at a later point in time, and tools like Castle Learning and Compass Learning, where students can engage individually online with content and, and answer questions and things of that nature. The principals have been conducting faculty meetings and professional development sessions where best practices are being shared and challenges and success stories, and that's been really effective. And our plan continues. And that's been really effective and, and our plan continues to evolve as, as we we get a little bit more comfortable with the technology that we have at our fingertips. And also on a superintendent level and also, um, on an assistant superintendent level with Dr. Cardassano and our curriculum leaders. We've been sharing with our Western Suffolk Bosse's colleagues, um, and pretty much all districts are using the same tools and, and pretty much in the same boat right now. Been trying to emphasize the, the most that, you know, the next probably two weeks are more about health and mental health than anything else. Uh, just trying to persevere through this thing and, and not go stir crazy and, you know, definitely, uh, limit how much we're outside, especially as we get closer to the apex. I was really concerned about students and social distancing and gatherings in Kings Park, particularly at Kings Park High School and some of our fields. Uh, but that seems to have gotten significantly better in the last couple of days and I think people have really gotten the message about social distancing. So all in all, I think, uh, I think that's, that's all the updates I have with, with our various, uh, plans. I just want to thank everybody for, for, uh, all your support. Our, our staff have really done a great job, you know, just trying to keep things moving along and provide for continuity of learning, meals and childcare and, you know, everybody's doing their part. And, uh, we're going to get through this together. Nobody does family like Kings Park.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Um, anybody else from the board like to say a few words?
Yep, I may, uh, Mrs. DeFord. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, ask that people help out in any way that they can. Uh, St. Catherine's is in need, in need of, uh, personal protective equipment and through, uh, Tanzie Hardware, they're collecting donations so that he can, uh, Tony can buy bulk items, uh, buy it in bulk, uh, to send to St. Catherine's. Uh, you know, continue to, uh, show your appreciation for all these first responders, uh, at this time. Uh, second, uh, at Tanzie's, Rich DeBeal, class of 79, switched over from making vodka to hand sanitizer and it is now on sale there because I know a number of people have been asking about it. So please just don't, don't ingest it. That's all I ask, okay? Uh, third is that a number of groups will try to get, uh, hit the road running as soon as they can for the food pantries. So people could, uh, help out any way, uh, when, uh, some of these organizations, um, uh, ask for, uh, needed items. And then, uh, finally, this one goes to, especially to Rick Holmes and Mrs. Laura Harris. Got lost. Happy Tartan Day for all you of Scott descent out there. All right, there was no parade, but, uh, you know, uh, just make sure you take good care of the clans. Thank you. All right. We're, we're the plan.
Thank you. I would also just like to, um, say thank you too. As well as what Dr. Egan just said and Mr. Johnson, um, it does take the community to come together and pull together and Kings Park has always done that. What people may not see is what goes behind, on behind the scenes, um, with administration, with teachers. We're all learning together. I think that's a huge thing to hit upon too. We have never been through anything like this before and hopefully we never have to go through anything like this again. But I think we all are learning. Um, not only learning educationally, you know, in classrooms, but I'm talking learning. I just see more kindness around, um, helping others. Really pulling each other together, um, and just coming together as a whole community, um, and getting through this. And like Dr. Egan said, no one does family like Kings Park. So, I just wish everybody stays healthy. Please continue to do the social distancing as Dr. Egan just, um, a, also talked about. Um, and we will get through this together. So thank you, everyone. Is there anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll go into public comments at this time. Okay, the Board of Education will hear additional public comments. Please follow the procedures outlined for public comment session earlier in the evening. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. Is there anyone tonight who is on that would advocate for public comment? Mrs. Grimley, you can put your mic on.
I should be used to Zoom meetings. First, I just want to say that, um, Kings Park is doing an amazing job. I have a student in the high school and I have a student in the middle school. I'm coming from, uh, like a little bit of a different background. We have, um, Stony Brook University is all online, just like all of the SUNY schools and most colleges are online and Stony Brook just announced they're actually online all through the summer. So I'm just interested in just more of a comment, um, not for like, um, you know, an answer, but I feel like every meeting I go to and every time we talk about, you know, goals and whatever for the district, we have academic goals and we also have mental health goals. Um, and I feel like the students in the district are probably, I know in my own family, all having some stress and anxiety, um, about what's going on here. We've tried to limit the news, but you have, um, parents that are working from home trying to figure out technology, students trying to work from home, um, with the technology. And I know that, um, colleges and universities have given like lists to instructors just, or, and administrators and staff just to call and do like a little brief check-in, um, just to see how the students are, are doing. So I feel like in a district where we have like 14 staff, 14 students to staff members, like maybe, and I'm sure some classes are doing it, but just like a little check-in would be nice to the students. How are you doing? How's everything going? I mean, I have a 17-year-old and an 11-year-old and there are tears every day for different reasons. We had takeout the other night and there were tears because we had takeout. It's, you know, every day it's something different and I know that it's all because of the stress and everything that's going on here, but I, you know, and I understand that my husband's a teacher in, um, the city and I know Zoom is a problem to do classes like that. One daughter has had a couple online meetups with the future, which has been good, but I think, um, and I don't know that the rest of the community feels like this, but from me, I think just like a brief check-in, like, hey, how's it going? What's going on? Anything new? Did you learn something good, something? Some sort of like one-to-one connection to the students just to see like how mentally they're doing because they're not all doing so well.
That's a good point, Mrs. Grimley. I, I appreciate you sharing that perspective with us.
I mean, I don't know that it could be fixed, but I know it's Stony Brook, like, we're, we have 27,000 students on three, on different campuses and we are reaching out just to make sure, like, hey, how are you doing? Everything okay? And it's a five-minute conversation. So, um, I just think that it's an idea. You could take it or leave it, but I felt like I needed to say something. And, um, I have two kids that don't see counselors and, but they are feeling, you know, every day my 11-year-old says, when is this over? And I don't have a good answer and I am in the minority where I'm hoping, you know, like, in my family, like, they're all like, oh, school's done for the year. I'm holding on to hope. Every time there's a new date, I'm like, well, that's the date we're going back to the normalcy. So, they're missing school activities and the junior prom was canceled and AP classes are different and like everything in their life has changed. And at home, I mean, behind me, I have a, a coloring thing we did, like, you're not stuck at home, you're safe at home. And we made a big deal about that. Everybody did one the other day. I'm trying, but I'm also trying to do, you know, my job is very student-dependent at Stony Brook, so I'm learning a new job. I'm on Zoom like nine hours a day. So, just learning something new. But, um, I know that if my family's feeling it, other families are feeling it. So, just an idea. But thank you. And I believe nobody does anything like Kings Park, so we can do this. We'll get through it. We'll be at an event somewhere. I'll get to hug Mr. Johnson again.
I'll be there.
I know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I just want to go over some, our next important date. Our next, um, Bosse's budget and election meeting is on April 28th. I believe, is that still the same, Dr. Egan?
Correct. We, um, we just need to decide, uh, on a, on a time that day, but yes.
Okay, so that's still the same. Okay, thank you. And if there are no other public comments, um, I would just like to adjourn into exec to discuss negotiations. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thank you.